All right, moving on to 11.0, new business. And I'm letting Mr. Salters take a drink of water and then he can lead us in our budget planning, priority setting time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This one might take a few minutes, so I want to make sure I'm ready for it. I appreciate the opportunity this evening to talk with you about general fund operating budget. It is that time of year again. And so what we're doing this evening is really twofold. Is, one, I want to talk with you about kind of where we are at this point with this year's budget and what we know, and then also talk a little bit about our priorities that we're recommending that you consider for the upcoming budget year as we go into the budget development process for, you know, '21, '22. So just a reminder, in this year, we had, these were our priorities, to restructure Gilbert Elementary and Gilbert Primary, which we did. Relocated Pele Middle School, happy that opened in January. Excited to see how well it's doing out there now. We did open the College Center at Gilbert High School. Really excited about how that's really taken off. I think there's a lot of energy around that program, Mr. Baskets brought to that. And of course, we've continued to prepare for COVID impact and unknowns. You know, as we were standing out there on Friday dealing with the vaccine clinic, no one would have ever thought that would be something in our purview, but here we are. So we'll continue to work through that. Looking at the status of the, you know, the current budget year. You know, we're continuing to monitor the economy and the actions of the General Assembly, you know, during our budget. The base student cost at the 45th day was $24.89, and that hasn't changed at this point. And I'll say, you know, kind of in general, we're seeing some of our local revenue actually tick up a little bit from our projections. And, you know, some of the state revenue staying about the same. We haven't seen any kind of significant slides yet in the state stuff. So we've been pretty fortunate with that. You will need to take up a budget amendment. And we'll talk about that some more in a few minutes. But you, you know, the legislature has, you know, I guess passed a step increase for teachers and that's been taken to the governor. And so we'll have to address that as part of this budget. I just remind you that the 21, excuse me, 2020, 2021 budget was about $8 million less than the 1920 budget. And that sounds really exciting because it sounds like, you know, we saved a bunch of money, went through and cut a lot. But just remember that we did not have a step increase in this budget originally. So that's a big chunk of that money. And so as part of the original budget, we had about $3.7 million of fund balance that we had approved to use to balance the budget. The board approved in December, one-time payments for employees. That was about a $6.7 million increase in the overall budget and salaries and related costs. And then obviously there, we've talked about this, the General Assembly is on track to pass some legislation. I really appreciate, you know, our staff and the relationships that we have with our state legislature. Dr. Little's involvement in that process really helped shape some of the legislation based on feedback from our staff and how we really should pay this, this step increase. It sounds really, really trivial to just give everybody a lump sum at one time, but it's a really complicated process. And we got some key language added to the legislation that allowed us to pay a lump sum in arrears for all of the money that they're due up until the time we pay it. And then our payroll system will automatically adjust their step going forward for the rest of the term. So really fortunate that that was added into the legislation because it saved a ton of time for our payroll staff. And it'll make it easier for our employees as well. And so what we're looking to do is April 13th, at your regular meeting, we would bring a budget amendment proposal to the board. At that time, should you pass that amendment, it would allow time for our payroll staff to process those lump sum payments and start the rest of the step increase on our April 26th payroll. So we're hopeful that that timeline and schedule will work out going forward. Taking a look at the budgets, just to kind of remind you of what we're talking about. We talk about our budgets. In FY '20, we had a $295 million total budget. And then in '21, we had the $287. And that just shows that $8 million decrease. And you can see we worked really hard in programs and services. Cut out about $1 million of that. And then salaries and related costs, that, the bulk of that is the step increase that did not occur. And then as a reminder, you see this chart a lot in our budget processes, readings and so forth. But the bulk of our funding is used for our most valuable resource. And that is our teachers and staff. You would expect that that's, you know, that's what we do, is educate students and our resources are those teachers and staff that help do that. So 87.73% of that budget is related to those endeavors. And then we, you know, have two other small pieces that support that mission as well. Take a minute to remind you about the operating surplus that we had at the end of 1920. If you recall, we ended the fiscal year with about an $8.3 million surplus. And so we could have moved that money into our fund balance. I mean, ultimately, that's where it goes. But we used that, a portion of that $8.3 million to pay that one-time bonus for our employees. And so that was the $6.6 million in December. The cost of the step for certified staff is approximately $2.4 million. And it's important, the legislation also says that staff have to be employed March 1st. So it's not for staff who've left prior to March 1st. They have to be employed March 1st. And so the cost of the proposed step for all other staff is about $1.1 million. Historically, in this district, boards have always done for all, done the same for all. So if, you know, the state gives a teacher step, then all staff would receive a step. So we're showing those costs there. We estimate that the state will provide reimbursement for the certified staff at about $1.5 million. And you say, well, that doesn't make a lot of sense. We have $2.4 million with the cost. The reason for that is because we pay higher than the state minimum salary schedule. And the state is going to reimburse us based on the state minimum salary schedule. So there is a requirement for us to make up that local gap to support our teachers. And we're proud of that because it helps in recruiting efforts and retention efforts for staff. So, you know, it's a, it's a problem, a good problem to have that we pay more than that state minimum. So the net cost of the step is about $2 million. What I'm showing here is that if you, you know, you use the balance of that surplus, you have about, you know, roughly $300,000 that would remain unfunded out of that, out of that surplus. And so this is a, there's a lot going on on the next few slides. So just take a minute to walk through. The left-hand column here is the actual budget, revenue and expenditures, and so forth for FY '20. And then we have our fund balance at the end of that, that column there. And so the eight, that's where you see the $8.391,000 surplus at the end of that year. And so the original approved budget at the beginning of this year was this, $274 revenue, $285. And then we had our transfers in. And then we, this is where we show that operational balance or fund balance, we would use about $3.6 million. And so when you kind of follow all that through, if you didn't spend the surplus, it would roll in and you would end up with a $65.9 million fund balance. And of course, we did spend a portion of that. And that's what the next column is. And this shows the amended budget that you passed in December. And that shows the use of that $6.6 million plus the existing $3.6 that was there. And so that takes your fund balance here. The last column is the potential amended budget. Should you move forward with the step for all employees? It shows the additional revenue that comes in and the additional associated expenditures. And this is where your fund balance would end up. A note on the, on the slide here, going back over. Originally, in the 1920 budget, you had approved a budget that anticipated using $8.2 million of fund balance. And so you didn't use, or we didn't use that throughout the course of that year. And we actually had an $8.3 million surplus. So that was, you know, like a $16 million swing to the good. And so in FY '21, we started looking at some other practices and ways that we could tighten those numbers up going forward. And so that's, that's where you see a smaller use of that number there. So again, if you, if you move forward with the full, you know, step for everyone, this is where you would end up potentially going forward. Talk a little bit about millage. This is really important in the conversation because as you start thinking about budget priorities, you have very limited sources of revenue and opportunities to generate additional revenue to pay for those budget priorities. And so, you know, the code of laws that defines the millage rate increase and basically it's the CPI from the preceding year plus this population growth factor. That population growth factor is provided to us from Revenue and Fiscal Affairs. We haven't gotten that number yet. So we took a little liberty and just did a three-year average just so we could have some conversation about what could, what 2021, '22 could look like. And so these are, these are exact numbers. And these are, you know, based on this average, okay? So you have a millage rate increase limitation. So you can go up 4.49% of your operating millage that was levied. And so that's how you get this 14.27 mills. And again, the same thing here. Now, in 2020, 2021, it was a reassessment year. And so we had rollback millage. And so that, that's what's reflected here. That's why our millage rate went down. I think it's 13.45 or 4, 6%, something like that, our points. I'm sorry, it's on the next slide. But anyway, that, or 5, 4, excuse me, that is reflected here. And so your millage levy is based on this new rate amount. And then we, again, we just estimated in this line. So you're looking at potentially this year, assuming that population factor is similar, at around 11%, or excuse me, 11 mills potential increase. And so when you, when you look at this, you also have the ability to do what's called using look-back millage. And you can look back three years and apply mills that were not levied previously. So the last time we raised millage was in the 18, 19 fiscal year. We raised 4.45 mills, which generated about $1.2 million. And we did that for Project Hope and school resource officers. Everything was related to safety and security enhancements in our schools at that time. Because we levied that 4.45, that left 9.82 mills available that we potentially could look back and levy. And so if you, if you go back these, these three years, you end up having 37.85, which is the total of this, look-back mills that you could levy in this, in this fiscal year. If you add that 37.85 to the 11, you end up with 48.85 mills that you potentially could levy. We're not going to bring you a budget that's going to recommend you levying 48.85 mills. At least I'm not. So, but that is an option. And we just wanted to show you what that looks like. And I want to remind you as well, when you levy those mills, because of Act 388, you're levying those mills on 6% assessment and vehicles and manufacturing. You're not levying that on homeowners. Homeowners pay zero property tax for school operations, okay? So that burden falls all on business when you're, when you're levying those mills. So assuming that our, you know, our average is about right for CPI and you can raise about 11 mills. A mill is worth, now with reassessment, $309,245. It would generate about $3.4 million if you went up that maximum for this year. That would cost about $66 per $100,000 of assessed value. So if you own a business in the, you know, in the district that was worth $100,000, you'd pay $66 more in tax. You follow how that calculation goes. And we just show you some random spots as to the cost impact and then the incremental increase in revenue and the overall revenue that would potentially be generated by doing that to, you know, potentially balance the budget. Want to take a quick look at membership. We look at average daily membership for our attendance calculations. This is the first year in, I don't know how long, over 20 years, that we have not grown around 450 to 500 students or more. We projected, I think it was 535 growth in this year. And actually, we had, we actually lost 161 students compared to our average daily membership at the end of last year. So our enrollment actually has gone down slightly. And I don't recall that happening in the district. But it's, we're obviously in a unique time. We had, we feel like we've had students pull out for different opportunities, different service models. We probably had some, you know, kindergarten students who stayed in, you know, their programs that were private programs and so forth. So we anticipate seeing a fair return of students next year on top of our normal growth. Now, our normal growth is kind of an interesting dilemma right now because we usually have building going on like crazy in our, in our school system, which we do. However, if you go try to buy a home right now in our school system, you can't find one. And if you find one, you better buy it today because it's going to be sold tomorrow. And many of the neighborhoods that are under construction right now have waiting lists and they've stopped taking names for building because there's so much demand. So we have a real supply issue of housing, which is a very unique situation. So we anticipate, you know, recovering by about 515 students, but we're not really sure what that's going to look like going forward because it's very possible that constriction of demand, or our, excuse me, of our supply may have an impact on that. But we do feel like a lot of folks who live here now that have gone and made other decisions will come back to our school district next year.
Mr. Salters, I don't know if my neighborhood... I don't know if my neighborhood is any indication, but we've had probably four or five houses. New families have moved in since Christmas and they all have five-year-olds and two-year-olds. So I feel like there's this young, I think that we're going to have an elementary school boom just based on what I'm seeing in my, and three of those five houses sold before they ever went on the market.
Right.
And I think we're going to probably be 700, 800, 900 is my prediction. I think a lot of these kids that went to private schools and charter schools and home schools are going to come back.
Right. And I would, I would agree with you. And we are taking the, I guess, the prudent budget approach and trying to, you know, look at that number at 515 because if you budget at seven something, you staff at seven something, you project revenue at seven something, and then you don't have that, then you're, you know, you're digging in your pockets to cover it, so.
Mr. Salters, let me ask you too, on the decrease this year, 161, are those actual withdrawals or are they unaccounted students as well, or do you know?
It's, it's withdrawals.
Withdrawals?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. So all that being said, I want to kind of, that's, that's kind of a set to where we, where we are and what we, what we want to talk about this evening. And so, you know, when we, when we think about budget priorities for our process, we really are thinking about these, kind of these 50,000-foot view priorities. What areas do we want to look at? And then within those areas, you'll have initiatives that support the overall priority to guide you and, you know, get deeper into things. So, you know, we've met with our school principals. SLT has met and had a lot of discussion and conversations. We did a session with our school principals and had some feedback from them as well. And so I'm going to, what I'm going to show you is kind of a jumping off point for you, the board, to have some conversation. But we feel it's important that we maintain our, and/or reduce our student-teacher ratios. We're concerned that if we go in, I'll just say kind of at a max ratio or a higher level ratio, and then we start having students come in that we weren't planning for, we're going to really be in trouble with high class size. So we feel it's really important to try to maintain and/or reduce ratios where possible to prep for those students coming in. And that's really twofold. One is so that we have room in those classes, but more importantly, so that we have qualified teachers in front of those students to teach. I know Mr. Stacy will tell you, it's, it's not an easy thing to hire a teacher. And they're in demand. And so we want to make sure, we got really good ones, we want to keep them. And so that's what we're working towards.
And I would also say, you know, fifth-grade teachers inherit the sins of the fourth-grade teachers and the fourth-grade teachers inherit the sins of the third. So I think this next year, '21, '22, everyone will inherit the sins of COVID. Meaning those teachers are going to have more work to do than their traditional...
That's right.
So giving them smaller sizes, I would definitely support.
And that, and that's what we're, we're working towards. Additionally, we feel it's important to continue our step increase for our staff. That sort of goes into this next one. But we, we want to identify, continue to identify and implement employee retention recruitment strategies. There are a number of strategies out there in the, in the industry right now. And our teachers, you know, have, I mean, they really, years ago, it was an employer's market. Now it's an employee's market. Our teachers are really obviously very marketable and have a really marketable skill. And so we want to make sure we can put things in place that help them feel supported and help them feel valued in our system. And so that's what that strategy is looking at doing. And then additionally, we have some other strategies. Obviously, we're planning for the relocation of the LMS facility. We're going to be preparing for, and our instructional services folks have talked about this with you before, but we're preparing for the Gilbert Early Childhood Center that would be opening in August of next year. Providing ongoing support for our Lula program. Last count, I heard it was over 700 or so students in the Lula program. So that's really a school worth of students in our middle and high school level students. So we need to provide ongoing support there. Again, continuing to expand the College Center at Gilbert High School. And then, once again, we need to continue to prepare for the ongoing COVID impact and the unknowns associated with that. And we hope, hopefully those unknowns will, you know, will decrease as we go. But that's really what we're focused, we think we need to focus on as we go forward. So those are the priorities that we are kind of putting out there on the table for you guys to react to and talk around. And of course, you may have others that you want to look at. And so, you know, with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you to have some discussion. And I'm happy to reference any slide if you guys want me to go back and look at stuff as we talk.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Salters. All right, Board, I mean, this is our opportunity to discuss budget priorities that you may have in mind or things that have come to you over the last few months. Share those and kind of provide Mr. Salters and his staff some homework as we head into preparing the first draft of the budget.
So I'm guessing you're going to present to us what you propose as the teacher-student ratios? And... Right.
Yeah, so we will, we will build a budget based on decreased student-teacher ratios. I don't know, Mr. Stacy, you want to talk about that a little bit?
So where we are right now, if you remember last year, we staff K2, 22 to 1. We did third grade, 23 to 1. And then fourth and fifth grade, we started at 25 to 1. When we got to actual where the rubber met the road and we were trying to make sure we had a budget and we were looking at, we were all working from home at the time, and we were trying to think about revenue coming in. And we're not real clear, like everything had shut down. So we were worried about sales tax, all of that is part of our revenue. So we really tried to be extremely frugal last year. And so we actually bumped those ratios up a little bit going forward. At the high school, we had, like, if you were over 2,000 students, your divisor was 18. And then it worked down that list, every 100 students, it went down 0.25. Well, we bumped it 0.25 to try to make it so we could save positions. What we'd like to do is go back to where we were at the beginning of last year and actually reduce it one more. The only place we, we reduced middle school down to 24 to 1 and we kept it there. Because middle school, when we started looking at numbers across the board, I think y'all even recognized middle school was pretty tight. And even at 24 to 1, it's pretty tight. So what we'd like to do is start this year at least at 23 to 1. Do K2, 21 to 1, and do 3, 5, 23 to 1. And what I'm going to argue is that what Dr. Powers just alluded to, there's going to be, there's a loss of instruction, obviously, this year due to the pandemic. And I think if we could reduce class size for teachers, that would be a huge strategy in addressing some of those loss, loss of instruction. And so if there's any way we can make that happen, and maybe even if we could go even lower. But looking at it the way I just described it, 21 to 1, 23 to 1, 23 to 1 in middle school, and then using the numbers we have in high school, we're looking at about 58 new FTE. And that new, that's going to cost us considerable amount of money. And, but again, if we could grab hold of, talking today, if we could grab hold of some of this money from the federal government that's coming down, I read yesterday or heard on the news, it's in the billions that South Carolina will receive. If we could make that happen for, towards FTE, it would really help us. And the beauty of doing it now in the early parts of the budget is our principals could go ahead and start to hire for those lower ratios. And if you remember a few years back, maybe two, three years back, we had a pool of 30, 30 FTE. And we allowed that, them to add FTE as, as numbers came in in August, special ed in September. So the problem we're running into now is we couldn't find the teachers this past August. And so if we wait that long to add FTE, it's going to be problematic. But if we could go ahead and tell our principals tomorrow, hopefully, but as soon as possible, if we could go ahead and tell them what the numbers look like with these reduced ratios, they could go ahead and start hiring them. And we would already be kind of staffing our pool that we've done in the past. And I think it would go a long way into getting qualified teachers into those classrooms. So I don't like maintain up there. I really like reduce student-teacher ratios. And I do think it's possible, but I think we've got to get on it quick. I don't think we can wait till May and say, okay, we're going to do this. Then we're going to be struggling because contracts go out May 10th and we aren't able to attract people into our district at that point. So I may have said way too much, but I just, I want to emphasize that.
Thank you, Mike. It's dangerous to give Mike the microphone.
It is. It is, I like to talk.
Love it, I love every minute of it.
Yeah, but, uh, it's, it's, it's really good conversation, and, and Mike's been very passionate about it, and I appreciate, uh, all the efforts HR has had, working with our, our payroll staff to come up with some numbers. And, and just for perspective, so you say, hey, let's go ahead and make it three, let's cut it three more positions or, or, or students per, per classroom. Doing that, that fifty-eight teachers is about four point two million dollars. Um, so if you want to do another one and you double that staff load, I'm not sure we could find them, but if you could, you know, that's eight point four million dollars. And then I would just take you back to this slide. You know, you're, you're looking at, just for perspective, you're not gonna find, um, that much money sitting in, in the existing budget, or big windfalls of revenue that can sustain positions long-term, um, in the budget. So you really have to think about what, you know, that, that whole conversation. And that's why, that's why I kind of gave you this reality check in the beginning, so that you know, you know, hey, I'd love to sit here and say, we'd like to have fifteen to one. I mean, that would be awesome. But, you know, it, number one, we couldn't afford to pay for the teachers, but number two, we don't have anywhere to put them. Uh, 'cause that's the second part of the conversation, is, is do we have classroom spaces? And I know, I know Mike and his team, as we've looked at the fifty-eight teachers, that's, that's kind of my party line, is, all right, well, do we have a classroom? And they've done the really, uh, good legwork to identify that already and know that we can accommodate that, uh, through, you know, creative ways, uh, that, that our principals come up with, uh, to find spaces for those kids, so, um.
Mr. Stacy, thank you for those numbers. As y'all know, I'm a former teacher in our district and an educator, so I really appreciate those class sizes, and I know the teachers in our district really do too. But my question is, so, like, when we're talking about equity between our schools and stuff, there are some schools that are close to these numbers, and then there are some of our schools that have much higher numbers. Will we look to move people around so that we can make our numbers more equitable, so that all our kids get good teacher-student ratios?
Well, we always, we start out with the, whatever the ratio might be, that's where we start. And then what happens typically is that some schools attract a lot more new students. And as they attract more new students, then we try to add another FTE. If we have, that's where the pool comes in. But this past year was just a real, and, and hopefully it was just an anomaly, it won't happen again, but this past year, it was really hard to find people in August. And so, um, I don't want to wait till August, that's why I'm, I'm passionate about, let's go ahead and fill them now. If, if, if I fill a school, I mean, we do look at numbers, and let's say we have, School A has five first grade teachers, and their ratio is at fifteen to one, and School B has five first grade teachers, and their ratio is at twenty-two to one, because they've had an influx of, um, new students, then we would consider taking a teacher from School A and shifting them to S- School B. We don't like to do that, 'cause people get really attached to their schools. But it's a reality.
Right.
And we try to do it before school starts, even before pre-planning, if at all possible. So we're constantly communicating with principals throughout the summer to, you know, and they let us know, trust me, if their numbers get above whatever our ratio is gonna be, those principals are calling us and letting us know, they're approaching it, they're approaching it, and so we had, start having some conversations. But, um, and typically where the real issue is kindergarten, because sometimes parents don't register kindergarteners right away, and so we have to be real careful about moving a kindergarten teacher too soon. But, um, I think if we started out with these lower ratios, and then just let everyone know that, you know, ideally it's twenty-two to one, not twenty-one to one, but if we start with twenty-one to one, when they get to twenty-two, they might even, uh, you know, approach twenty-three, that's not really crazy kind of talk. But when he gets above that, then maybe, and so I, I just, you know, I plead to you tonight to, to try to work towards that number one priority up there is reducing student-teacher ratios.
Can I, can I jump, uh, mind, real quick? And this has been kind of a, um, priority of mine for several years, um, because I know that the student-teacher ratio is a function of two numbers, certified staff in the building and students in the building. And depending on how much, like, for example, at the high school level, you might have a lot more certified staff that is not actually face-to-face with students. And so that messes, that messes with the numbers a little bit?
That's one, the divisor, like, for a high school of two thousand, the divisor is eighteen. So you're saying eighteen to one, but the reality is, there's not eighteen kids sitting in every class.
Right.
I mean, if you've got kids that are in high school, you know that you've got high school English classes that have thirty in them or twenty-eight. And so the lower we can get that divisor, the better. And, um, and we try to give our principals as much flexibility as possible, because they're gonna look at, do they need an instructional coach, or there's some things that they might need outside of a classroom teacher? And, um, you know, so it, it is kind of misleading sometimes when you say, well, the, like, even middle school, the number's twenty-three to one. Well, it's not really gonna be twenty-three in every class. It's, that, that twenty-three to one helps us get those numbers up so that we can have reduced numbers in the classroom.
Right. And, and that, that's kind of what I always get to, is that, you know, we hear eighteen to one, um, and then partially a function of there are only so many math teachers. And so you look at our high school math classes, and the math classes, except for the very higher level ones, you know, they'll have thirty in every, in every section?
You would want to style, I mean, if, if the world was, everything was fair, you'd want to have your more advanced classes, maybe have a few more kids than your kids that are at need with, you know, remediation, et cetera. But if you only have one AP chemistry class and only fifteen kids sign up for it, are you not gonna have that AP chemistry class for those fifteen kids? You, you're gonna have that AP class for those fifteen kids.
But I'd also like to argue that, and, I mean, this is a debate for another time, but those higher level classes, the burden on the teacher is greater, because the grading and the interaction with the product that the students, so maybe they should have smaller classes.
So my, my, my principals.
You can argue both sides of it.
My principals would say the same thing to you, just give them more teachers and they'll make sure that doesn't happen.
And, and going back to your question about different ratios, one thing that can happen, uh, that can skew ratios significantly is, is if you have a, a small number of classes, like four or five classes in a, at, at first grade, and you end up getting right to the, the top of that ratio, just right over the ratios, and we go back in and add a, a teacher, it can, I, I don't want to say artificially, but it can deflate everyone's ratio well below where, um, it should be, because you added that extra teacher, um, while everybody was just over that threshold. And, and that's what we have conversations all the time, you know, it's gotta be, if it's, if the ratio is twenty-one, well, it's gotta be twenty-one and a half, more than twenty-one and a half before we'll add. Um, and, and we've gotten into situations before where it's gotta, it's gotta be a whole nother student before you add, because it, it will have an impact. And that's why on any, if you just look at any given snapshot of, of student, um, you know, ratios, they can be different because of those, you know, unfortunately, that all the kids don't come in nice little twenty-one buckets and, and where you can place them in the school, you have different, you know.
And we have special programs that impact the numbers a little bit, too. Immersion is one of them. That's why we try to start in kindergarten with twenty-five to one as the ratio in immersion, 'cause we know, as they are to, you know, go to fifth grade, kids move out of the system. You can't just put somebody in an immersion class. And so those numbers tend to get less and less as they get, you know, upper grades. But, um, I have a grandson that's in kindergarten immersion, we're not messing with immersion, we're gonna make that happen. I'm an aside.
Okay, so I have one other thing, just based off of this slide. So I know how hard it is just to recruit people to the profession. So once they're recruited to the profession, we gotta recruit them to Lexington One. So, um, lots of surrounding districts do really great things to entice people to come to our district. Now, while we all love Lexington One and we think they should all come to Lexington One, is our district doing anything that might?
Those student-teacher ratios would probably go further than anything else could possibly go. If we could advertise those ratios, I think that would help us so much in recruiting people into our district. The other thing we've talked about as a part of this coming budget is to look at first-year teachers, 'cause a lot of times, it's really difficult. I mean, first-year teachers make roughly thirty-five thousand a year. It's hard to live in a, making a rent payment for an apartment if you're not, you'd have to have a roommate. And so, um, we've talked about maybe starting this first-year teachers at step, whatever the step, third step would be, like, it'd really be step two. And so zero, one, and two would be the same salary, um, but they would get that salary early. They won't get raises each year, but they would get that salary early. Aiken does that now, and so when they start publishing salaries for new teachers and they're recruiting with other districts, it looks like they're starting salaries a lot higher than ours. And so those are some things that we've talked about doing. I mean, obviously, we'd love to give, you know, big salary increases, you know, to our district. We've talked about doing, um, sign-in bonuses. I think one of our strategies that we put forth this year was to think about what we did with the employee bonus. Now, he's told you how much that costs, but it would be kind of nice to have a retention bonus for all of our employees, similar to what we did this year for COVID. If we could, if we could make something like that happen again, that would be awesome. Because I do think those are the kinds of things that will get people's attention. I, I say this, Dr. Little said it repeatedly about, I say this all the time, I've been in three states, I've been in four districts, I promise you, our kids are phenomenal. They really are phenomenal, and I try to tell people that all the time. When somebody wants to complain about our kids, they, they shouldn't. They're, our kids are so compliant, and that's really a testament to our parents and to our community, 'cause our parents expect their kids to behave in class. And so, um, it gets into, I mean, we are very fortunate in Lexington One, and we just need to do a really, really good job of selling that to people out in the public. And anyway, I, I feel strongly that, um, we, we got what it takes, we just gotta get them here, and, and we're gonna do whatever we can to make that happen. And I'm gonna shut up, Jeff, I promise.
You're good, Mike.
Uh, well, of course, I came with a list, um, very many pages long. Um, one of the first things that I have, um, speaking of bringing in new teachers, I have heard that the new teachers don't get paid for the five days of training that they are required to attend before they sign their contracts?
No, we did, the New Teacher Institute, we pay them a stipend to attend that.
They do get paid, okay. Um, of course, I think we need to look at our salary, um, scale for all positions. Bus drivers are still at twenty-four years?
That's, that's one of our strategies that's in the budget. We would like to see the salary schedules go to forty, to forty years, um, across the board. Bus drivers, everybody, 'cause they stop at thirty. And, I mean, I, I'm proposing we do them across the board to forty, and we don't have that many people that work beyond thirty, but, you know, they should, that expertise is worth something, and we should pay them for it, so.
And how, how far did the state salary schedule go?
Twenty-four.
So above that is on us?
It's on us.
Okay.
But that's okay, we can make that happen.
Yes, we can. I would like some numbers for that. Mr. Salters, and you may know these numbers today, CARES Act funds, how much of those have we got to date, and how much are we expecting to get?
So we've, we've gotten, what is it, roughly down to about twelve million? Two points, yeah. So, you know, roughly about, what, sixteen million, seventeen million total? And that's three different distributions of, of funding.
And that's not recurrent, it's one-time funding?
That is correct. And then we, we have heard, um, that we can anticipate about four times that amount out of this new distribution. We don't have any information on that yet. And, and those, um, you know, those funds, of course, are restricted. They have different, uh, spending criteria, uh, that you have to meet, and they also have, um, different terms that they run out, um, like, you know, September of this year, September next year, September twenty-three. And so one of the big keys for, for that funding is recovery of lost instruction. And so a lot of, um, you know, what we have looked at with that is, um, summer institutes, uh, and, and really focusing this summer hard on catching students up. And, and our instructional services team has spent a lot of time working through that.
And that's gonna be, just as an aside, that's gonna be our April presentation. So we're gonna walk through those federal dollars and how they've, how they're being targeted, and primarily, and I'm, I'm very thankful for this, that the summer programming is gonna probably be, I would argue, our most intensive summer ever when it comes to summer programming. So we're gonna have all kinds of, uh, opportunities for students to engage in, in almost an extended year. It's not exactly be like that, but it'll be, uh, pretty significant and intensive summer programming. So we're gonna walk through that in April, as before, as, as we look at our budget, 'cause in April is really is the, the budget budget where we get into it, that, um, what that is, kind of what we've got left over there. And, but we do hope that the new funding, of course, we just don't know a lot about it yet. And, uh, and we'll see what happens when it starts rolling out, but, uh, if we can utilize that to help offset some of our costs, you know, we would certainly do that. The real question about federal dollars, and you just always need to remember about federal dollars, is it always has lots of strings attached to it. It has, you know, as, as Mr. Salters said, there's certain buckets that could be spent on, there's things we've had, uh, um, we've had to make an argument and a case that it fits in certain places. A lot of our health room assistants, for example, was a case of that. We had to really make a, an argument that, that aligned with the bucket. And so if you can find some of those areas where there's some ambiguity, you can certainly argue some of that, but by and large, it's, it's, uh, certainly more black and white, cut and dry, when it comes to what can be spent on. So we'll be walking through those, some of those possibilities in April. And again, hopefully by April, we'll know more about the, the big, 'cause that's now been a, a week or so since that's been passed, and we'll know more exactly about the next year's, the next wave of funding.
Okay. But some of that money can also make up lost money in our budget, such as technology. I know some devices were purchased with that money.
Yeah, it, it, it has the, uh, ability, and, and, you know, as Dr. Little said, we'll walk you through that. We, we have done that, where we've gone through, and if, you know, we made purchases, um, you know, we made a bunch of PPE purchases out of general fund, and we, you know, we reversed those back into, um, CARES, um, or S R money, and technology is also another area where that's, that's the case. And so that can, the, the, the thing you have to be careful about, and I'll just say this again to everybody, you have to be careful replacing general fund expenditures with that money, and then you create this cliff, um, in two or three years, where you pulled all that stuff out of general fund, and now you gotta go back and load it all back in at one time, and that can really bite you. So you have to be really careful about, uh, about doing that. But it, it is, it is an expenditure that is allowable.
Okay. And I know I had read something, too, that the State Department of Education, um, provided learning platforms or funding for that. I know that was, um, a decent-sized chunk of change that came out of our.
You're talking about like Schoology or something like that?
Yeah, Canvas, Schoology, Blackboard, Google Classroom. So I know some things have been helpful that would usually come out of the general fund. Just moving along here, increased subpay and offer incentives, that's at, um, near the top of my list. I don't, I mean, we have to increase subpay, I don't think, I mean, I, when we asked her in the last budget hearing, you said you couldn't remember the last time that.
I, I, I can dig that up, yeah.
Um, and also offer incentives, so I looked up a few things. In one district, they offer an incentive, if you substitute ten times a month, you get a hundred and fifty dollar bonus, twenty times a month, there's three hundred dollar bonus. And another local district here, they give pay bumps of between twenty-five and thirty-five dollars a day, and they set the compensation at ninety-five dollars to a hundred and fifteen dollars for a day of work. I know currently, um, I have our pay scale somewhere, but we're still in like the sixty-something dollar range for, yeah, here it is, for our substitutes. Yeah, so sixty-eight dollars a day with a four-year degree, um, and substitute teacher training, sixty-three dollars a day with a high school diploma, and that's for substituting for a teacher. Healthroom assistants, fifty-eight dollars a day, just to give the board some kind of idea. Another incentive is subs who work more than ninety days in a local district, they're also included in the district's retention incentives. I'm not sure what those are. Subs who work twenty days a month are entered into a drawing to win a five hundred dollar bonus, where five are chosen. And that's on top of existing policies, such as hundred dollar bonuses for substitute teachers who work ten Fridays a year, and long-term assignment bonuses of fifteen dollars a day for those in the classroom at least fifteen days in a row. Onto my next bullet point, um, as Mr. Stacy mentioned, and I had on here, don't maintain, but decrease class sizes, I had that in all caps. Because I know that, and I actually, Kathy since she knew I'd share this with the old board, I had went through and spent days and days and hours, um, with a student-to-teacher ratio for each class in the district. I'll be glad to provide that to you, and that will give you a. And that will give you a real idea of what our student-to-teacher ratio is. Do band directors get a stipend? I had that on my list and it's been there for months, they did.
Yes.
Okay. National Board certification for teachers. I have a long list here about this. Let me see. I will, okay. Okay, so the state of South Carolina no longer provides incentives for national board certified teachers. But I think it's important that we encourage teachers to attain and renew their national board certification. You'll hear teachers say that becoming board certified is one of the best means of PD. So by investing in board certification, not only are we meeting our goal of highly qualified teachers in every classroom, but we're also providing professional development. We can do this by reimbursing costs and providing monetary incentives, which both Sumter and Lexington, Richland Five do to encourage teachers by using one or either both of those methods.
So we do give a stipend for national board. And I'm, I'm going to not tell you the amount, but it's somewhere between $7,500 and $10,000. I can get that amount for you. And if you would send me some of those things that you bulleted, if you'll just send them to me. Some of that stuff with substitutes and those incentives, we actually researched that a couple of years ago. And that was part of what we put forth in the budget. But again, when you see the dollar amounts, you're going to see, I can do that, I can do this, I can't do it all. But I can, if you'll send me your bullets, the things I already have the numbers for, I can send them to you.
Okay, that would be great. So we are providing a stipend for all board certified teachers, even when they renew?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just texting Kimberly Freeman to find out. She says it's $3,500 local and then the state if they qualify. And I think the state has reduced it. At one point, it was $7,500 and I think it's working its way down to like $5,500, maybe $5, something like that.
Okay. So we provide $3,500, is that what you're, okay.
Lindsay's telling me $3,000. I'm getting two figures. I'm getting $3,500 from Kim Freeman and $3,000 from Lindsay.
Okay. Okay. So I think a lot of the feedback that we could get going towards the budget would be just to kind of sit down and talk to teachers. I know here I have some notes from pizza and policy night. That was a long time ago, but I've been holding on to these forever. Schools want a mental health counselor more than what they currently have. And one of the principals actually suggested that it needs to be needs-based, because there are more mental health issues in high-poverty situations. And mental health counselors for teachers that will be available during the hours that they can see them. I was looking up to see if you had any feedback on that, Mr. Stacy, but I'll keep moving. Electronic devices for teaching assistants. So what did we do with all of the old iPads and other devices that we replaced a year or two ago?
We, we sold the, the devices that we could get, that were salvageable. But most of our teaching assistants now, I think we addressed that, have, during the pandemic, we used some of those, the funding and, and have addressed that, that issue. So if they're in a classroom with students, they should have a device.
Okay. I'll check on that then. So in October 2020, just looking at the general ledger, we transferred hundreds of thousands of dollars from salaries to library books. I think this is something that we should at least include in our budget every year so that we don't have teachers supplying, you know, their personal classroom library books every year. Like, I know some of them had to give those out during the pandemic if they taught Lula. So that's just something that I think instead of, you know, waiting on a bond referendum or something, that we have that as part of our budget. Uniforms. I know you and I have talked a little bit about this, Mr. Salters. A recurring schedule for uniforms. Do any gate fees go towards those purchases? How is it decided how much of each account that pays, you know, band, cheer, athletic? Like I said, this is all, like, this is things we can talk about later, but just these are ideas that I have. Paying the fees for cosmetology and other students at LTC. Since my daughter graduated from the cosmetology program, I, I really, that was a year ago. I can't remember exactly how much those fees were, but they were quite a few hundred dollars. So I'm wondering, since we are paying fees for dual enrollment courses per student, if we couldn't also consider paying fees for cosmetology and other programs at LTC? And so LTC has a waiting list. And I talked to Mr. Myers. So he not only provided me with some much appreciated insight into our numbers here locally at LTC, but he also provided me a copy of the Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment that nine Midlands area CTE directors worked on this spring. And the report outlines the areas that are most needed in our community. For instance, the STEM field, diesel mechanics, Richland District One has a diesel mechanics program, while other districts do not. Companies met with an area CTE directors expressing need for help in shortages with heavy equipment operations, plumbing, HVAC, and cost estimation. So I would like to look into expanding these course offerings. Welding, auto tech, cosmetology, building construction, and culinary arts. Mr. Myers says those are consistently oversubscribed and have more requests than can be met. So although those students may know what they want to do when they graduate and they could be certified, since we don't have the means and there's a waitlist, then they either have to go on to college or, like, some of the cosmetology students just go to a cosmetology school afterwards. So I have put some stuff in there about the step increases, we've been over that. I'm sure there's a few other things. I'll see what else anybody else has that might come to me. Oh, I do remember something else Mr. Stacy was saying. You said we need more teachers, Mr. Salters said we don't have anywhere to put them. So I just want to remind the board.
I said we have to verify we have somewhere to put them.
Right, or, yeah, okay, maybe that's what you said, that wasn't a quote. It was, we need somewhere to put them, we don't, yeah. So I just want to remind the board that this is where the board needs to look at bond referendum money. And so when the people voted on the bond referendum, that last line on that ballot gave the board the ability to spend any remaining funds on projects approved by the board. So when we have leftover money, we need to be looking at classroom additions, more programs for CTE, things of that sort, before we spend them on other things.
Thank you, Ms. Garris. Anyone else with comments about budget priorities that are on your to-do list?
I just have just one question. From a budgetary perspective, what did we learn through COVID? And, and I don't, you know, obviously, we, we heard HR. But in the grand scheme of things, what did COVID kind of teach us? That would be helpful as we prepare this next budget. And, and I, I say that to say, thinking from the highest level. You know, we, we never thought we could do two recesses in a day. Well, lo and behold, we did two recesses, kids loved it, you know, worked great, right? Doesn't necessarily, you know, we'll continue to evaluate these things. But what did we learn from a budgetary?
Well, I'd like to respond, take a little bit of Mike's airtime. Because I'm passionate about several things. And, and one thing we learned is there's a digital divide. I think we learned that statewide, and I'm really pleased that Lexington One stepped up and took care of that.
Do you think we shored it up?
I do, yes, sir.
Effectively enough, or do you think we've got further to go?
I think we have a little ways to go and we're working on that. But I think children who didn't have connectivity now have hotspots. We, we worked real fast on that. Also, we learned that children are resilient, sometimes more so than their parents. However, there's a consequence to that. And there's a huge need, I, I want the board to understand this. Next year, we need to really think about the social, emotional needs of our children, because it's huge. And it might be masking itself right now, but I promise you, next year is going to be a critical year for school counselors, for social workers. When you, one of you said, you taught with a principal and they said, I need more social workers. We, as a team, have already talked about that. They're telling us that, we need more interventionists. And, and the bottom line is, you can't have, everything can't be a priority. But I've always felt in my career, I have to keep my focus on what's best for students. And if you can, if you can make decisions based on that, you're doing a pretty good day's work. And our children, K-12 next year, are, are going to really need a lot of support. So those are things I think we learned. Also, we also learned that our teachers can do more than they think they can do. It's amazing how they've improved their craft in a, in a totally different world, very different from the way they're providing instruction. And you know what? They love, we learned that doing IEPs via Zoom works. We'll probably never go back to 100% face-to-face IEPs with parents. I think Dr. Little will tell you, we've learned as a team that meeting with parents via Zoom meetings works really well. They get home from work late, they don't have to drive down to a central services place to meet, and they're very effective meeting. So I, I don't think we'll ever 100% do our work the way we've done in the past.
So would I be correct in saying that, that you think we're philosophically better off with our use of technology?
For some students, not for all.
Right, okay, okay.
Is that fair?
No, absolutely. I, I mean, that, that's the big question right now, you know, it's facing everybody. We all kind of got plunged into this, this need for technology and maybe we weren't quite prepared for it yet. And, and I don't mean just education, I mean multiple industries. And so anytime that happens, you have to kind of go back and evaluate and say, well, are we better off because of it? You know, what worked and what didn't? And so as we kind of paint the picture of what the next budget looks like, what type of precedent, you know, what does that need to factor in? And, and how big is that divide? And how much did we close up? And how much more do we need to go?
Right, right.
So, so I would agree with Gori, and I wouldn't, I would want to emphasize this. The social, emotional piece of that is really, really important, and I think we learned that. And I can say this, because I've been doing this for a long time. When I was a principal at a middle school in Savannah, Georgia in the eighties, we tried to do what we called teacher advisor. And it was the same thing, sort of like crew now. We even wrote a curriculum for it. And we got so much resistance, because teachers, I want to teach my subject, I don't want to have to do that stuff. I think this year, our teachers have recognized how important that is. I don't hear people complaining about crew. They want to do that, that's something they need to do. So to me, that's a real big win this year. And I agree with her with the travel. I think as our meetings, we've rethought some of our meetings. I do think it's important to have face-to-face meetings sometimes. But I do think that you can optimize your time, and we are always trying to give people back time. And we've learned that the technology will allow us to do that. So that's something else that, that we really gained from this, this process.
If I could just add, I think I always have to bring this up every time we have these conversations about technology. But we've added a lot of technology this year. And we've done it through CARES and we've done it through other means. And, and what we need to do is we need to be strategic about how we plan to replace that technology. Because we, we have, in a sense, built a cliff that in a short term will need to be recycled. And we're working on a plan for that. But I just want the board to be aware that, you know, in three to five years, you know, we're not going to hit the lottery again and get a bunch of federal funding coming in to replace, or we can't count on that coming in to replace all that equipment. But we rolled out a lot of equipment and we have a very robust infrastructure. And our students have a lot of access. And, you know, our IT staff's been unbelievable. But it has created something that we need to really be preparing for in a few years. And that's going to be either to refresh all of that equipment or not, you know? And I don't think the "not" is really going to be satisfactory. Because, you know, as, as when we first started the first one-to-one implementations of the first devices, you know, technology is just the way we do our work. It's not this, you know, whiz-bang thing for, you know, that's going to change the world. It's just what, how we do our work. You know, it's like this phone or that, you know, this pen that I'm holding and this piece of paper. I mean, it's just another component of our work toolkit. And so our students are using it and they're, they're very effective with it. And we're going to have to continue to provide it, and that's something we got a plan for.
Feel compelled to add to the conversation since I'm the only one who hasn't spoken, except for Catherine. But we talked about the technology end of it, and, and, you know, are we philosophically better? Well, I think we're better than we were. And certainly in, in August, we had over 8,000 students who made the decision to stay home. Part of that was the unknown and fear and everything that came with this new thing we called a pandemic. But I'll remind you that we have, last time I looked, about 747 students, basically a school of sixth through 12th graders who are going to continue that platform next year. So we did something right with some, some of those folks. So while it's not going to be in the thousands, you know, we could very easily, you know, come close to 1,000 this coming school year. With respect to Ms. Garris's comment about the mental health counselors, I think we currently have 16 or 17 that we do contract through Lexington County Mental Health. So they're not our full-blown employees, that we, they're contracted out at $20,000 apiece. So in the scheme of a huge budget, that, that's not a, a huge cost, but we always have competing priorities. I don't know what the, the talent pool is like at Lexington County Mental Health, but that's certainly something we should look at and will continue to look at if we do need to increase that. It's not a tremendous amount of money, again, when you're looking at a $300 million budget to, to add those folks at some of our more needy locations, should they be available to do that. So I appreciate you bringing that up, because that's something that we always want to look into. Because the social and emotional support, while we've always said it was important, it has really shown to be important. And you even mentioned to the, the point about for, for our adults, for the employees. And we have a, a new employee program that reaches out to, to employees who, who need that kind of assistance. So we're, we're making steps. It's just what we've learned, we've learned those things. That, that's what we've learned. We've learned about handling the, the severe discipline problems. You know, what, what may have been points in the past where we, I hate to say it this way, but look for reasons to get them out of class. And I don't really believe we did that overtly, but I, I think we've, we've stepped back and looked for reasons and ways to keep them in class, because class time was so important, more so this school year than, than ever. So moving forward, we would like to incorporate some of those same strategies once we get back to whatever we've considered to be normal. And, and maybe there's, there's more discipline strategies, maybe there's more ways that we can reach those kids on the front end. Because we've always talked about trying to get to the, to the "why" of the problem and not just the "what." So lots of lessons learned and we'll, we'll learn more tomorrow.
So sort of a consistent theme is a post-COVID budget is social, emotional. I mean, is that, is that a fair assessment? From, from your seats, that's what you see? Yeah, I, you know, Mr. Salters, you and I have a very similar job, eight to five, in that we're the no guy. You know, everybody wants a dollar, we say no. I'll give you a quarter, but no. And it is, as Mr. Caldwell was pointing to, there is a prioritization that has to occur at some point. You have to make a choice, and, and that's the, the hard part. That's why, you know, I've always challenged my employees where, where we're at, is that we just don't look at the numbers, that we use the numbers to tell a story. And I'm a very big fan of putting it through the filter or the lens that we're looking at. And so our lens is our strategic plan at the end of the day. So if we were to take our strategic plan and we were to filter our budget through that and see what comes out of that. Now, it's a completely radical way of approaching how you would, how you would develop a budget. It doesn't mean that you take away the nuts and bolts of it, but that, that's the lens. It doesn't mean that you take away the nuts and bolts of it, but that that's the lens that you look at it through. And I would say that we have been themed in the past with our budgets. Some budgets focused on safety, some budgets focused on teacher salary. It sounds like one of the the concerns here recently is social emotional, you know, in the post-COVID. So that would be my only recommendation is that we really take, we just don't go back to the way we used to do things. You know, we all want to get back to normal, but at the same time, we want to take what we've learned this past year and, you know, get rid of the sacred cows that we don't need and begin to really kind of kind of develop a budget through that lens, if you will. That would be my only recommendation.
Well, I wanted to mention, and I almost didn't bring this up, but as y'all were responding to Dr. Guyton, I decided that I was. So one of my priorities, and I don't even know if this is truly a budget matter, but I think it could, I think the budget take, the budget would dictate whether it could be done or not, is one of the things that I received the most positive feedback from throughout this whole COVID, the 2020, 2021 school year, was starting the school year in cohorts, elementary and high school. And I think that plays right into this social and emotional support that we want our students to have. I mean, my friends that are high school teachers, they loved having small groups of their students that they could get to know each day during that first week or two weeks. And if there was any way that we could incorporate that into our our re-entry into the next school year, I think that that would really establish those relationships, those on-campus relationships that we want our students to have and our teachers want to have. And as kind of a part of that, one of the other things that I think was just a a real serendipity in that really dry summer that we had last year was the the drive-bys that our teachers did to our students. You know, kids love to see the adults in their lives show up. And if there was some way that we could build in, you know, a little bit like the supply funds, but some capability for teachers to be able to, especially the elementary teachers, to be able to make home visits for that, you know, for a couple of weeks before school starts, drop off, you know, read this book before you come to class and we'll read it on the first day. Some some sort of a capability for them to have that first touch point with our students on the students' home base rather than, you know, through just an open house or a drop-in. And then I wanted to echo about the face-to-face meetings. I have been through with my three children, my youngest will be 16 tomorrow, 13 IGP's. And this year's Zoom IGP was the only one that I would give a thumbs up to. It was fantastic. You know, IGP's, parents have to take the day off, you know, the student comes out of class, the, you're sitting across from the guidance counselor and they've got something on their screen that the parent and the student can't see it. We did it on Zoom. This guidance counselor threw it up on the screen and he could walk us through. It was glorious. So keeping the virtual IGP's is definitely 100% a go. But I really appreciate what y'all are doing as far as helping us kind of adjust our lens. And you know, I I do think that we, our strategic plan always drives our budget. But that's not always obvious that it drives our budget because the strategic plan is is our roadmap for how, and the budget is the fuel in the in the car. I think that's an analogy that you used once, Joe. And I think that maybe we're just, we're, this year has put us all in different seats in the car. And so what what we're seeing as we're going i- is a little bit different. And I think that that might not be a bad thing. And so maybe we're we're looking at those, the power skills and the softer things and the the whole kid, the whole student, and the whole teacher, you know, the, you know, these teachers that are, like you said, Dr. Tally, they're, they were always capable, but that we have seen them be extraordinarily capable and excel in completely new ways that they weren't even sure that they could accomplish. All the while, they're also exhausted and scared and and, you know, always learning. And so it, you know, anything that we can do for, to wrap services around our teachers to support them, whether it's making sure that we have substitutes that are well-paid enough that teachers can find a sub when they need one. I mean, that that's a huge thing. The mental health counselors for our teachers, the the opportunity, you know, maybe support groups. Or I know, I know a number of teachers that have used the the calming room that our counseling department created. You know, really push those services and those opportunities out to our teachers, I think would be a really great thing. So does anybody have any other questions or comments about budget priorities? No? Anybody else? Everybody? Is everybody awake?
Madam Chair, I would just point out that, you know, we're going to be bringing First Reading back to you guys April 20th. So as you, you know, we're going to be working really hard over the next month to pull some of these ideas and concepts together and put numbers on them. And, you know, we'll, we'll need to make sure we get feedback from you guys over that timeframe. And and we'll certainly work hard to give you a First Reading that you can react to. And and of course, that's always just a a starting, a conversation starter. And then we can go from there.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Salters, and thank you to your team.